All right, welcome back, everybody. We are back into the open session of the Select Board meeting, of Sherburne Select Board meeting of Thursday, September 11th. If I could have the Assistant Town Administrator read the open session agenda, please.
Good evening. After I read the agenda tonight, the board can vote to either approve or amend the agenda. I've had no request for public comment. And items can be taken out of order when topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the consideration of awarding a general obligation bond. Pam Douse is here, Treasury Collector. Item number two is the consideration of interim town clerk appointment for Jackie Morris. Item number three is the consideration of acting tree warden appointment for Sean Colleen. Item number four is the consideration of appointment to the Elder Housing Committee for Abby Fisk for a term to expire June 15th, 2028. Item number five is the consideration of a fall town meeting. Item number six is the review of the 2026 Select Board meeting calendar with town meeting and election dates. Item number seven is the consent agenda, that is, the TA paywall warrant, the draft minutes of July 24th, 2025, and August 14th, 2025, and various one-day liquor licenses for the Lions Club and a one-day liquor license for Jim Drew Tremont for the community center. Select Board reports and TA reports will follow that.
So, approval.
Great, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff? Jeff says aye, and I'm aye as well. Um, all right. Item number one, consideration of awarding a general obligation bond.
That's me.
That's you.
Um, so, we actually did really well. We got six bids, um, which they were impressed about, um, bond council. They said maybe because we made them uncallable and it was only for our 10 years that we got, um, more response. But we went with the, um, the best bid, which was from Fidelity. Um, and do you have in your packet the whole? I don't know, do I have to read this like that?
Oh, yeah, I was wondering, like...
It's sort of the minutes that much, I do know.
Yeah, can I just refer to the sheet that's in the packet? Or do I have to read everything?
Best read it.
Best read it?
Well, it'll be Dan, he's the clerk.
Oh. Nice.
You gotta earn your paper.
This is the one thing that the clerk has to do. I remember, there was like, there's like one thing that the clerk has to do.
So, I'm happy to read it. It can't just be entered in the minutes by reference. I'm happy to read it if that's the right thing.
I'll prefer the fall.
It's... Most bond councils say they like to have it right.
I'm, all right, I'm happy to read it. All right.
Do it like times three.
Do it like?
Times three.
Yeah, you can, you can, remember the Mighty Machines commercial, that guy? The speed talker.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah. All right, here we go.
Well, before you read it?
Yes.
I think, if I could, just have an explanation as to what are we borrowing the money for? What projects are we borrowing the money for? So that the voters understand why are we borrowing money?
Okay, well, they voted for what we're borrowing money for.
Yes.
Um, the turf field, the DPW dump truck snow fighter, um, uh, annual amount for road maintenance, the historical display build-out, the pickleball tennis courts renovation, money for town hall facilities, the Pine Hill School HVAC. That's it.
Thank you.
The only thing from town meeting that we voted on that we're not borrowing for currently is the ambulance. Because it's a couple of years out from even being able to order, I guess.
You said the tennis courts were on the, were one of the ones you read?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Pending where bids come in, right?
Right, yes. Yeah, the bids will be opened, um, later in September, September 26th. I believe the bids are, are due to be opened. All cost estimates indicate that there's enough money in hand to do the project.
All right. Ready for a dramatic reading?
Yeah.
Hi, the clerk of the Select Board of the town of Sherburne, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the board held September 11th, 2025, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the $2,665,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2025 bonds of the town dated September 22nd, 2025 to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC at a price of $3,015,448.61 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on September 15th of the year and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. 2026, $235,000, 5% rate. 2027, $245,000, 5% rate. 2028, $270,000, 5% rate. 2029, $270,000, 5% rate. 2030, $280,000, 5% rate. 2031, $245,000, 5% rate. 2032, $260,000, 5% rate. 2033, $275,000, 5% rate. 2034, $285,000, 5% rate. And 2035, $300,000, 5% rate. Further voted that in connection with marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 2nd, 2025, and a final official statement dated September 9th, 2025, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a containing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which will constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manual executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient carrying to effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that votes were taken at a town, were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, paragraph 2, section B. At least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remaining so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, chapter 30A, section 1825, as amended.
Well done.
Thank you. So, collectively, was that a motion? Then I will second that. All right, that long thing has been moved and seconded. So, roll call vote. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff says aye, and I'm aye as well.
Thank you, Pam, for all your work getting that done.
That was amazing, you made no mistake, you read this.
I know, that was good.
I think you've done this before.
Dramatic readings.
Um, all right, next item is, uh, let's see, consideration of interim town clerk appointment, Jackie Morris.
So, I will be appoint Jackie Morris as interim town clerk.
I second.
All right, moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Uh, Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
I should modify that to say, until a successor is appointed.
Yeah.
Right.
Otherwise, we'll be tempted to never appoint a successor and never let it go.
Can we?
That's okay. I'll do that.
She's not on, she can't object.
Um, all, all right, I guess, let's, uh, let's re-vote since you've amended it.
Move approval as amended.
All right, Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff? There's another aye already on here, and then I'm also aye. Okay, item number three, consideration of acting tree warden appointment, Sean Colleen.
Sean, I move to appoint Sean Colleen as acting tree warden until a permanent tree warden is appointed.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff, I think is, I see the three dots. Uh, yep. Uh, he's an aye, and I'm aye as well. All right, moving right along. Consideration of appointment to the Elder Housing Committee, Abby Fisk, for a term to expire June 15th, 2028.
Can I move to appoint Abby Fisk to the Elderly Housing Committee for a term to expire June 15th, 2028?
Uh, one friendly amendment. They do not like being called the Elderly Housing Committee. They are the Elder Housing. Katie Sturgis always made a point of that, so. All right, that's been moved.
I, I second with the slight change that I don't think that there's an E in your name. Let's spell it right.
I put an E in your name.
In the record.
That's right. Uh, all right, moved and seconded. Uh, Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff is an aye, and I'm aye as well. Did you want to say anything, Abby, since you're here?
No, I just thought I'm no, so I should, you know, show up in case you had any questions. No, I'm looking forward to it. Be great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
But you're not new, you're famous.
I'm new to elder housing, yes, but, um, not famous, but...
For all the work on the, on the, uh, the, uh...
The 350th year?
350th.
Yeah.
Trying to think of the word that says 50, not birthday, but...
Anniversary.
Anniversary.
That was a great year, so I'm looking forward to something new and working with Pam, yes.
And you did a great job.
Thanks for that.
All right. Item number five, consideration of a fall town meeting. Uh, you can defer this item? Okay. All right. Pending additional information? All right. So, uh, we're going to defer this. We're waiting on some more information from various parties and may, may come back to it. Um, all right. Item six, review of the meeting calendar and town meeting and election dates. For myself, too. All right, so we've got January through June, and I believe it's, uh, every second and fourth Thursday of each month. And then we've got town meeting, uh, scheduled for Tuesday evening, April 28th, 2026. And then, if needed, the second night would be on Thursday, April 30th, 2026.
And those room, the room is booked with the school department, so...
Okay.
Excellent.
Or dates are confirmed?
Okay.
Excellent.
Much, yes.
Helped without...
Much, much auditorium is?
Yep.
Um, all right, and then the town election is Tuesday, May 12th, 2026. Um, anybody? Jeff, Jeff has some dot-dot-dots here, so I'll wait to see what he has to say. But does anybody else have anything they want to say?
Looks good to me.
Looks, looks good to me.
Uh, Jeff says, uh, we are missing so-called Bloody Saturday, which is advisory hearing.
They will not have set that date yet.
They?
Advis, you know, that, that date hasn't been set yet.
Okay. So... Okay, so, yeah, so the...
It couldn't, couldn't be here yet.
So, the advisory hearing has not been set yet, so...
Yeah, once the capital budget committee and advisory start meeting, I'll put together a financial budget calendar like I've done in prior years.
Yeah.
We'll have those dates.
Usually, it's what, the hearing has to be at least 30 days prior to the, to the town meeting, right? So, the earliest it could happen would be March 28th. How many days in March? 31. So, March 29th would be the latest that it could possibly happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I suggest that this calendar get sent around to board and committee chairs? Just because not everybody will be on this meeting and know and I'll just kind of let everybody, let everybody know what our plan is and, and, and when the town meeting is, they'll kind of get word out.
Yeah. Good, good thought.
So, you don't want a motion to approve? Now we went away for feedback, or do you want a motion to approve?
Do we usually approve the schedule?
Yes, usually approve it.
We usually approve it? I think, yeah, I don't think, I mean, the only thing, I don't think any of these dates would change. It's just that at some point, the addition of the advisory public hearing would happen. But I don't think it would alter this schedule.
Which is to say we should go ahead and vote to approve this?
I think so, yeah.
So...
Sure.
That's what I was...
Yep.
About to do, question of approval of the proposed calendar as presented to the board that's in front of us tonight.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Uh, wait, wait, wait before...
Dot-dot-dot?
Dot-dot-dot. Uh, he's, uh, Jeff is asking that the Select Board meets during the school break in April? Uh, for, oh, yes.
Starts on the 20th.
Okay, so, school break is 20th to the 24th, and we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, the 23rd, which is right in the middle of school break. Um, I suppose that's usually not an amazing idea.
Well, the problem is that that's a, town meeting is the next, essentially, the next week.
Yeah.
And we really need to have some preparatory meetings rather than just walk into town meeting without at least a Select Board meeting in close proximity. And it doesn't make sense to wait to the night of town meeting if there's any serious issue.
Um, well...
So, it has to be a meeting during...
We could, I could say, we could keep this tentatively, and usually, as April rolls around, it becomes a little bit more clear if there are loose ends that need to be tied up prior to the town meeting. And so, we could always decide at the April 9th meeting whether or not we would want to either keep that meeting, um, but, you know, chances are, I would be away, but so we'd have to, 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 um, do it remote. Or we could have a meeting, uh, during the third week of April, so that would be, what, April 16th? So, we could always just call up a one-off meeting.
If, if we were to meet on the 23rd, it certainly could be, it could be a Zoom meeting for everyone if, if, you know, in addition to you, other people had schedule complications as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, wherever I am, that we can likely to have, um, you know, Wi-Fi access, so. Um, so, yeah, I would say, let us tentatively just keep it like it is, and we can always amend it in April if, um, conditions require it.
So, let's, well, under motion.
Yeah, I think we, I think technically, we, technically, we already passed it because you three already voted before I saw Jeff's thing. So, we'll just finish the, uh, the vote. So, I guess, Jeff, do you want to just officially vote on, uh, on the schedule? All right, Jeff votes aye, and I am also an aye. Okay, okay. Uh, boy, we're blasting through here, consent agenda.
Can I move approval of the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff says aye, and I'm aye as well. And, all right, Select Board reports.
I have one small report. Last night, Becca Roush, our state senator, had a, her fall town meeting, her fall town update, and I went, along with about seven other people. And so, the turnout was not great, it was a beautiful evening. But actually, it was quite nice. You know, she presented her usual spiel of, of her, uh, her accomplishments and what, what bill she's filed and what she's concentrating on. And then we had sort of a free-wheeling discussion. Um, I think the best part of it was that, um, I did have a chance before the whole thing got started. They were waiting to see if more people would come. So, we had some free time in the beginning. And I had quite a long time to talk to her main aide, Aiden, what's his name? Aiden Doherty. Um, and so, I was able to update him on the water district and the Coolidge Street developments and sort of, uh... Well, give him a preview of the letter that we're going to be asking, probably within the next month or two, uh, from Becca Roush to provide support for the MWRI connection in general. And, and they're totally ready to do it. He seemed to be quite up to date on what was happening on Coolidge Street. So, that was good.
Good. Just a footnote on that. I, I saw from some paperwork from Jeremy that you were on the MWRI's committee of some kind?
Yeah, I was on, uh, the MWRI Advisory Board and then, um, for about eight years, and then was on their executive committee, um, and for about two, two years.
So, you still have those connections?
I do, yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, that might be very helpful.
It already has been very helpful. I should add that, uh, at, we had, we've been meeting the, the North Sherburne Watersaw District Interim Commission has been meeting monthly. And at the last meeting, uh, we reviewed some draft documents related to, uh, the bylaws and regulations that the interim commission will have to approve and adopt. And we had a lot to learn about how those look, and Jeremy was extremely helpful, I have to say, um, in guiding us through it. And it was basically an education session, thanks to Jeremy. And so, it's been extremely useful to him, him having that experience.
So, the only thing I think of is, was it water under the dam? Or hell or high water?
May, May could be water under the dam when they remove, when they remove the dam in South May.
Uh, all right, any other Select Board reports? Not a, not a, not a, TA reports?
Yeah, just a handful. Um, not sure if you noticed on the way in, but now it's dark, it might be harder to see, but Sean did put a mock-up of the town hall entry sign, the right-way sign.
Notice.
Uh, just so you get a visual of how the size, um, would be as, as presented. So, we just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, it was also helpful to make sure there wasn't any sort of interference with sightlines and drive activity, which there doesn't appear to be. Um, in case you're wondering what size it may be, there's some plywood out there to show you the size. So, please take a look. If you have any concerns or anything after your look, just let me know. And we'll go from there, so. Also wanted to, um, I guess, re-advertise the E-Ways collection the library is doing. I'm not sure if you are all aware, but there's a, uh, Upcycle has been retained by the library for folks, residents in town, to bring electronic items, and they'll, they'll get a certificate of destruction from the, for the data content. Uh, and, um, you know, they can get rid of old computers, laptops, um, and all that for, for free. So, it's through September, um, or until they fill up the bin. If they fill up the bin, they may get another bin, but, um, it's being coordinated by the library folks. So, stop by the library if anybody's interested.
So, just at any point during opening hours, it just kind of brings stuff?
Um, just stop in, talk to some staff there. They have, um, some postings on the outside that you'll see that kind of tracks directions on what to do, but...
Sounds like devices should be wiped clean before, before they're put in the bin.
Clean, the company does sort of guarantee the data security, that it'll be wiped clean, but, um, you know, we'll be bringing a bunch of old useless IT, old computers that are town-owned, but Klaus is going to be taking the hard drive out and he's going to be destroying them himself. And the rest will go to Upcycle, but that's probably just sort of a belt-suspender's approach.
Do you know if, if they determine that something still has any sort of utility, will they sort of like set it aside and, you know?
I think so, I mean, it's, it's, I'm not exactly sure what they're going to do with it, but I mean, the company's called Upcycle, which...
Sounds like...
It sounds like they try to reuse before they recycle.
I'm sure I have a bunch of stuff in my house that I like, I don't use anymore, and, but somebody might still find it useful, yeah.
So, will this be advertised on the town website?
Oh, we can. Um, I'm sure the library has been advertising, but we'd be happy to share on the town website.
That seems like a good idea.
Yeah, good idea.
The more people who know, the better, better it'll be.
Can do.
Uh, Jeannie Guthrie has her hand up.
It's already on the website.
Oh, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Jeannie.
On the ball.
Oh, yeah. Paying attention.
Uh, an update on, uh, progress on our GIS information. So, uh, as you know, we've been working to, you know, better get a, get a better handle on the data that we have and keep it occurring. Uh, we've been working on updating the parcels, um, you know, the individual land parcels within town. Uh, they were last updated in the GIS system in 2011. Um, we have been working, thanks to Chris Canny, uh, who's been kind of taking the lead on this, uh, and in the help of a consultant, we've updated all of the parcel mapping. Uh, they're kind of in final review, but we hope to get those, the final review back to the consultant and then upload it onto the GIS system that's viewable by all on the town website within a couple of weeks. So, that, that's great progress, that really should be updated annually, not, what, every?
15 years.
15 years. So, you know, with this update, we're also going to be updating the way we go about update, keeping it current, so. But it was a good, a good reset. And more to come as well with, with the GIS information. There's other information we need to, to update and keep current.
Just a question, I had a community that was doing the conversion of GIS and discovered that there was a lot of parcels that were not in their system at all. And that no taxes had been paid for hundreds of years. 250 years in one case. Are we finding in Sherburne that there are these derelict parcels floating around?
But... No, we, we haven't found that, but we, this is kind of a mapping component, which will, we'll circle back with the assessing office to, with the, with the product to ensure there isn't any. ensure there isn't any, but this update was based on, you know, lot splits and subdivisions that have occurred since two thousand eleven, we haven't found any yet that we're, we're missing from the tax rolls, but it's a good point, we'll, we'll check.
Well, it's just from a legal point of view, if you never sent a tax bill for two hundred and fifty years, it's very hard to collect. Let's put it that way.
Update on the MS four permit and the administrative order that we were issued by Mass, I mean, the US EPA, the planning board has updated on adopted regulations to govern the operations of the stormwater bylaw, and those have been submitted to US EPA, they've accepted them, so that kind of closes out the administrative order, so we're in good standing with the MS four permit, the stormwater permit issued by the US EPA. Our finance folks are working on, you know, the, the balance sheet and the close of FY fifty-two twenty-five, the auditors are scheduled to start their work in the next couple of weeks, we should have free cash numbers in early October, so Deb has been diligent and very timely getting all the numbers into the system, so we're on, we're on good standing there, and setting ourselves up well for the budget cycle. There's a group of us that have been working, coordinating the Sherburne History Center and Museum with the library and the town, discussing an MOU, we've drafted a sort of like preliminary MOU, town council has helped us prepare that, at some point that will need to come to the select board for, for your adoption, but we've been working collaboratively, you know, all of, all interested parties have been working collaboratively on that, the design for the, the library is about seventy-five percent, we're just releasing them to go to the, the final design, which is essentially the construction documents, the bid documents and final plans, to be able to get that bid in the next month. Council has suggested that through construction, that an MOU would be appropriate, but upon occupancy, that they're, they're suggesting a license and or lease sort of agreement, the same parties, but just a, a different document, so again, council will help us draft up one or the other, if you have any preference or questions on that, I can, can help online.
Something like a lease arrangement from the town to the historical society for a dollar a year, some, something.
That's going to be our second one-dollar lease.
Something, something, I mean, not exactly that, but something along those lines, yeah. I'm going to get rich.
Actually have some more formal discussions on, I just wanted to give you a heads up in case you had anything to, talk to me offline, to inform that, and to give you a heads up.
Will, will there be a, an MOU of sorts between the library and the history center?
Yes, both of these, the MOU and the lease and license would be a three-party agreement system.
Right, okay.
So just to kind of underscore what we've been saying here with some humor, I think we all want to see it succeed, we want to see the, the history display center succeed, we don't want it to interfere with the library operations, so we very much, I'm, I'm very much happy with the word collaboratively, because this is exactly the, the way I would think it should be approached, and I think from what I've heard, it's what all of us want to see, is us all work together and make this happen.
I think folks are coming together and to that goal, yeah.
One issue that I think maybe, maybe a, a challenge is keeping the history center open, the maximum amount of time, when the library staff is not expected to cover it, so, you know, we'll, I'd want to look more at how that is, how it's going to be manned.
I'd, I'd second Marion's, kind of had the same, had the same thought.
Do they have a separate interest?
Sure, and then the last update, I just wanted to, to give folks the heads up that we're planning, Sean's planning the paving of Woodland Street, it's the final roadway project of the year, we're hopeful to get that scheduled for early October, it'll be the balance of Woodland Street that hadn't yet been paved, so the balance through to Washington Street, it would be sort of a spot milling and, and patch repair, and then leveling course and a final wearing course, so we, we hope to get that accomplished in early October. I'll get the word out to, to all.
We all know that the state chapter ninety funds have increased by fifty percent.
Yeah.
Long fought for, which means instead of two hundred million, it goes to three hundred million, and at two hundred million, we were getting like, like two hundred and fifty thousand, and if you add fifty percent on top of that, we're over three hundred thousand in revenue to be used on projects like this.
Yeah, yeah. Can we expect that basically every, every municipality will just get an even fifty percent increase?
More or less, I mean, it's calculated based on road miles and population, and you know, that's the overall program, but they're actually in, in that provide, in that bond issuance, they, they give, give somewhat priority to rural communities, you got a little bump there that other communities may not have gotten, so it's not a straight ratio, but the way they calculate it was in Sherburne's favor, so we probably got a little more than fifty percent increase.
So Green Lane might get graded a little more.
I hope not, I told Sean that.
Leave the footholds.
Yeah. Okay, great. Is that it? All righty.
Just a comment on, on grants that, I was reviewing this list of grants that we've gotten, and I'm very pleased and very impressed, but the amount of work that's gone into getting grants for this, this community, that's like free money for us, the taxpayers don't have to pay it, we get the benefit of the, of the work product, so please continue full steam ahead and getting as much money as you can.
Okay, Paul, you're on. The end of the agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, Marion.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Jeff.
But it's too early to adjourn.
All right, then I'll, I'll vote nay.
This is one of the shortest meetings that you've had.
Yeah. Oh, okay, we'll stay, but the meeting is over, so.